I think I know where that's going.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, will you please stand and join Councilman Taylor in salute to our flag in our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand in standing, please.
Would you bow with me in prayer? Our heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you for our community and our service people, and thank you for their dedication. We just want to thank you for the season that we're in right now, Resurrection Sunday, and we want to thank you for our Lord Jesus Christ who died for us and has given us eternal life. And we just ask your blessing upon this meeting tonight as we meet. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pastor Don?
I'm on my hat.
Call to order, our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of March 20th. Second item on the agenda is public recognitions, and I do have a couple of proclamations to read and present. Don, would you mind joining me and actually maybe, how about your wife, too?
Okay.
I think that would be very appropriate because you're a great team.
Yeah, thank you.
I have the honor on behalf of City Council, actually on behalf of the entire city, to present this proclamation, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas Don Reapy has displayed a true commitment and loyalty to his faith, community, and the city of Guthrie for over ten years, and whereas Don Reapy is always considerate, thoughtful, and helpful to the citizens of Guthrie and Logan County; and whereas Don Reapy has supported through thoughtful prayers and blessings three mayors, five city managers, and numerous city council members in his service to the city; and whereas Don Reapy has contributed abundantly in his leadership and support of the city goals of integrity, service, and quality of life for the citizens, and is well-respected by our city staff and the city council; and whereas Don Reapy has initiated and led opening prayer for the city council meetings for over ten years; and whereas Don Reapy will be remembered in servicing and blessing our city, helping to make it a great place to live, work, play, and worship. Be it therefore resolved, I Stephen J. Gentling, Mayor of the City of Guthrie, am honored to declare Tuesday, March 20, 2018, as Don Reapy Day."
I happen to bring a sermon, you guys don't got 30 minutes, don't you know?
It says right here, five minutes, five minutes, your congregation didn't put that up there, by the way, Don.
Did you want to take a picture, honey? I just want to thank you guys in the city for allowing me to serve you and my Lord in this way for all these years. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Don. Chief, would you join me, I guess, or more than one? Right here? This proclamation reads, "Whereas the safety and security of citizens of Guthrie, Oklahoma, are of utmost importance to the mayor and the city council; and whereas rapid control of bleeding at the scene of multiple casualty events such as mass shootings, terrorist attacks, earthquakes, multiple motor vehicle accidents, and/or industrial accidents can be lifesaving, and up to 20% of the trauma deaths could be prevented each year with effective bleeding control; and whereas a person who is bleeding can die from blood loss within five minutes, and while emergency responders will arrive as quickly as possible, bystanders are always their first, and studies have shown that by learning bleeding control techniques, the public may become trained, equipped, and empowered to help in a bleeding emergency before professional help arrives. And whereas the American College of Surgeons, FEMA, and the United States Department of Homeland Security have partnered with Stop the Bleed Initiative to ensure that bystanders have skills and knowledge to provide immediate bleeding control to victims at the scene of an event. Now therefore be it resolved that I Stephen J. Gentling, Mayor of the City of Guthrie, do hereby proclaim Saturday, March 31, 2018, as Stop the Bleed Day in Guthrie, Oklahoma, and I call upon our citizens to join with Stop the Bleed Initiative in their efforts to ensure that all citizens are equipped with the skills and knowledge necessary to stop severe bleeding and save a life." Chief?
Thank you.
Do you want to say a few words?
Yeah. If you guys that don't know him, this is Dr. Bill Warden. He's our medical director for our EMS service. He also serves as a reserve deputy for the sheriff's office and is on their tactical team as their physician. This was something that we decided to join up on with the sheriff's office to push this initiative this year with our locals, and we're going to do an event on the 31st here at the Baptist Church Family Life Center at 10:00 AM. We also have an event going to happen simultaneously over in Crescent. And what this is, as the proclamation said, is an effort to educate just common laypersons with, they might have CPR, they may have no skills at all, but at least try to teach them a quick and effective way to stop rapid bleeding. And it's unfortunate that, you know, some of the world and local events that have occurred that have caused us to have this concern, but, you know, we're no stranger to natural disasters in Oklahoma, so the possibility for bleeding from that is very extreme in our state. So the more folks we can have that are trained in this that can stop that bleeding before we get there, you know, the better chances of folks having a successful outcome. And we've got a little video that we produced to try to push this. I think Dr. Warden wants to say a few quick words, and then we'll show you guys this video. It's pretty neat.
Okay. Dr. Ward?
I don't have a lot to say. I wanted to show you the video, and then I'll answer a couple of questions if you have, if the council members have them. So this is just a quick 60-second video to kind of explain why Stop the Bleed and what we're doing.
I'm Long County Sheriff Damon Deveraux.
I'm Guthrie Fire Chief Eric Harlow.
And I'm EMS Medical Director and Emergency Physician, Dr. Bill Warden. And we would like to invite you to Stop the Bleed on March 31st.
The Stop the Bleed Campaign was started by the White House after the Sandy Hook tragedy.
The goal of the campaign is to teach the public how to stop life-threatening bleeding. Whether it be from a car crash, a farming incident, or a shooting, bystanders are almost always the first on scene.
Again, what was the time and the place for the training?
With this training, you could potentially stop the bleed.
March 31st, 10:00 AM, after the first Baptist Church Family Life Center, and then the one in Crescent is the same time.
At the library.
The high school library. High school library. Okay.
I'm Long County Sheriff Damon Deveraux.
I'm Guthrie Fire Chief Eric Harlow.
And I'm EMS Medical Director and Emergency Physician, Dr. Bill Warden. And we would like to invite you to Stop the Bleed on March 31st.
The Stop the Bleed Campaign was started by the White House after the Sandy Hook tragedy.
The goal of the campaign is to teach the public how to stop life-threatening bleeding. Whether it be from a car crash, farming incident, or a shooting, bystanders are almost always the first on scene.
With this training, you could potentially stop the bleed and save a life.
Heartland Medical Direction, along with the Logan County Sheriff's Office and Guthrie Fire Department, have all partners to bring this valuable training to you.
Join us Saturday, March 31st, at 10 o'clock AM at locations around Logan County to learn the skills that can save a life.
For more information and locations, please find us on Facebook at www.facebook.com/stopthebleedlc.
And so that kind of answered your question, all the events, this is a national initiative that Saturday, March 31st, is National Stop the Bleed Day. So this will be a course that we anticipate lasting an hour or less than two to teach the general public, who may or may not have ever had any medical training, things that they can do immediately that studies have shown that can save somebody's life in that first 10 to 15 minutes before an ambulance gets there. So if you're available, if you know someone, if you have family members, anybody that wants to attend, it's open to the public, it's free. The fire department will be there to help with the training, the sheriff's office will be there to help with the training, and we're certainly open to doing additional classes elsewhere if anybody wants one. So I appreciate the council, the mayor, for this proclamation. Again, thanks, and we would welcome your attendance Saturday, the 31st.
And Dr. Warden, if they, if, let's just say, a business wanted to have a presentation made, how do they go about, do they contact you, do they contact the chief? What's the appropriate contact point?
Either, or, they're welcome to contact myself, Chief Harlow, or if they go to our Facebook page, again, Stop the Bleed LC, then they can certainly send us a message through there. And I think we would be more than willing to offer a class locally to a business if another church wants to set up a venue. I think this is something that's very important, not just Saturday, March 31st, but as the year progresses, we can do these classes at any time, just like CPR.
Yeah, I think CPR is a skill set that we've been working on as a nation for years and years and years. This is an equally important skill set that is easy to learn and that citizens can save a life.
That's exactly right. And one of the things that we've found is that a lot of businesses have an AED, an automated defibrillator, there's probably one in this building somewhere, but unfortunately, we now need Stop the Bleed kits, and that's one of the things that we'll talk about at this event, is something to use to be able to control hemorrhage, so.
Very good. Anybody in the council have questions?
I think it's great.
Great, great. Thank you, Dr. Warden.
Thank you.
Chief Harlow, thank you so much. Harlow. And, okay, we now have some previews of some more videos. Staff?
We are going to bring Aaron from the back room where he normally hides during meetings, to bring him out front. We want to preview a new episode that we are doing called Growing Guthrie. And then Aaron also put together a film recruitment video, and then the third one was done by the Oklahoma Film and Music Commission, was a promotional video talking about film incentives, but they used Guthrie as a backdrop and used some of the filming that Aaron had done. So if Aaron's ready, we'll let him show those three videos.
Sorry, I had to switch cameras real quick. Again, my name is Aaron Roberson, for those of you who don't know me, media tech with the city for a little over six and a half years. Been in the media industry for about 20 years. I couldn't do what I do without my good friend, Bill Miracle, who volunteers with us here. Bill's put in hundreds of hours past five years. Me and Bill used to work together at News 9 in Oklahoma City, and he's been a valuable, valuable asset to me, his 35 years in the business and the impeccable character he brings to the city, and his knowledge is well, well, well worth it. So, anyway, I'm going to throw it over to Jim Allgren, who's going to kind of walk you through what these videos are about, and then we'll show them to you.
Thanks. This was kind of a made-up impromptu really quick so that Aaron could go back there and write the videos, so Jim isn't going to do a whole lot of talking. But he did ask me to just talk a little bit about these videos real quick. You know, the Growing Guthrie, it's a new series, and over the past years, we've had different series within GTV20 for everybody. I think Lee Ray had mentioned the Growing Guthrie series, and it's going to focus on planning, economic development, and tourism, with the whole idea of showcasing our great city, the things we do, and the future. And hopefully that'll bring to us economic development and tourism, and help with our planning abilities. So we're going to see that, and then we have a couple other films, a film, I don't know, on recruitment of the film industry. It's kind of a neat little film, these are all very short, they're not that lengthy. And the last film is the Oklahoma Film and Music Commission promoting, they're promoting films, but as they promote films, they're going to talk about Guthrie, so.
Turn the volume back up.
I started coming here in my junior year of high school. I just love to learn in general, and so this kind of gave me options that my school couldn't really give me. I did not want to go to college, and so I love it because I learned what I'm wanting to learn, and not a bunch of extracurricular courses and everything like that that are mandatory. It's just what I came to learn, and it gets you straight as much as possible into the career that you would want to pursue after you finish up here.
My sophomore year I signed up, I realized how fun it was, but then later on, I realized how educational it really is now, it can really help me in my career. The reason why I joined pharmacy tech is because at Meridian, you'll have a direct education for that program. Here in the pharmacy, I'm learning everything that pharmacy tech does, the duties, responsibilities, what they do filling prescriptions, compounding medication. Here at Meridian, you get exactly what you need for your job.
Meridian has 10 schools in our district, and so students who are part of that district get to come here tuition-free, but they spend a half a day with us in their selective program that they've looked at, and they get to spend a half a day at their high school. We provide transportation. Some students are coming very far, like Guthrie. I think some of my students really take the opportunity here to think about their career, their further education, their life ahead. It's really great as an instructor to be a part of that, to be maybe one piece in their puzzle as they're growing, as they're graduating high school, as they're looking to the future.
The scenario that we just saw was a great example of how we like to train our students, by giving them an environment that is safe to do the right thing, but also safe in learning what happens if you do the wrong thing. It just provides a great environment for our students, it gives them the confidence that they need to go out, and when they're then in direct contact with a patient, they have the confidence that they need to do the right thing. At Meridian Technology Center, we have a wide variety of opportunities for individuals. If they're wanting to retool for a new career, if they're wanting to just emphasize what they're currently doing, maybe some additional certifications. So we have classes for the real estate agent, for the insurance agent, if they want to be an EMT, if they want to be a certified nurse aide, we just kind of run the gamut on all of those. Security guard, private investigator, we have a lot of opportunities for those students.
Meridian provides training in a number of areas through our full-time programs, our short-term classes, but another area that we spend a lot of time doing training is through business and industry services, which works with companies, organizations, the city, to develop customized training to help provide employees with the skills that they need to make the organization successful. Meridian is really here to serve the community, that's the most important thing to us. We believe in the economic development efforts within the Guthrie community, and we want to come alongside organizations to help be a part of that economic engine.
We employ about 115 people here in the Guthrie community. We design and manufacture material handling equipment, lifting equipment, typically for material handling applications. Some of our standard products that people would be familiar with are dock lifts and freight elevators, ergonomic work positioners, and so on. In the plant, our skill sets that are required typically are welders, machine shop people, those are the tough skill sets that we have to find here in the local community. Meridian Technology, we've worked together so long, I think they anticipate our needs, almost address them before we recognize them ourselves, so it's been good, they're very reliable, they're very efficient, they're a good group of people to work with. We enjoy a friendship with those folks in addition to our business relationship.
The Center for Business Development is a 25,000-square-foot business incubator. Business incubation is the process of taking in early-stage companies that have a good chance of making it, and providing a safe harbor, an environment where they can thrive. And you do that by providing an opportunity where they can collaborate with each other. You provide that through consultation, ongoing check-ins, coaching opportunities, and really looking for ways that we can tap into the resources that they need to continue to develop and grow their company. We do that through our monthly programming, such as the Business for Breakfast, which is open to the public. We'll bring in resources, sometimes entrepreneurs, experienced business professionals, to come in and talk about salient subjects that help early-stage companies to be successful. Connecting our entrepreneurs that are tenants of our building with more things than they could actually have access to if they were to independently go out and rent space, whether it's fabrication space or retail space on Main Street.
Us being in a space like the CBD was a real blessing because it was the only space that provided the functionality that we needed as a manufacturer, and not many incubators carry that aspect. We're down here cranking in an actual commercial kitchen, cranking product out, packing, and everything else. We've been able to access resources from marketing, we've been able to access resources from culinary arts. The CBD provided us a place to do some light industrial manufacturing, as we were kind of getting our bearings and starting the company to produce.
One of the things that we think that is very important, we decided that one of the things we want to do is build a site in Guthrie. And this is not going to take away from our full-time programs, our high school students do go to the Stillwater campus, and that will continue. This is really about adult and business development and growth. Some of our occupations that we are knowing is growing in Guthrie, like our health, ability for those businesses to send their employees and staff to get training there. It also could be for events. We know that Guthrie is an active community, and we want to be active with them, and so providing an opportunity for them to have another facility that they can actually have those types of things is important.
Guthrie, America is a specialized community with Victorian charm, picturesque landscapes, and historic buildings that are ideal for any project, including big-budget motion pictures, smaller indie films, and more. Theatrically known as a made-to-order backlot, Guthrie provides the best of both worlds. The red brick streets provide a unique backdrop for period pieces, yet its small-town charm allows it to double as any town in America. Access to Guthrie is convenient. We have our own airport, and we're just 30 miles from Oklahoma City and Stillwater. Guthrie is becoming one of the most filmed small towns in America, and has hosted numerous films, including Rain Man, Twister, The Killer Inside Me, Tayata, the indie film Rudderless, Christmas in the Heartland. Guthrie provides a supportive community and access to all your production needs. When looking for a site for your next project, please remember to choose Guthrie. For more information, please visit guthriechamber.com or call 405-282-1947.
So, having the tax incentives in a state, I'm a producer, and we look for those, they're the hook originally, that makes you consider one place over another. And if you look at the different states, it's only been positive to have this incentive. There are so many aspects of a film coming to a state and being produced and filmed in a state, not just the actual dollars that it spends on crew and location and infrastructure, but also tourism and public awareness. And then you get, your crews are fabulous here, they've had enough experience now, but you want to keep that going, and then the better crews you have here, the fewer people get brought in from LA.
Well, congratulations to Aaron and to Bill and all else that were involved with putting those three promos together.
The first piece you saw, Growing Guthrie, we hope is a long-term goal for that series, to use it as a tool that's multifaceted. We want to use it for retention and expansion of existing business and industry, recruitment of retail outlets and restaurants that expand the Guthrie marketplace, recruitment of new business and industry, encourage developers to expand the range of housing opportunities for young professionals, increase tourism and special event sector of our economy, and then finally promote local amenities that attract and retain young professionals. Millennials often pick where they live before they have a job. Also, companies look for places that attract this type of talent. Two key elements, information and amenities. Together, they form the basis for success. Marketing by advertising key elements of the city, and second, amenities are highly important variable in individual location choice. This is not an exhaustive list, nor is it necessarily in priority order, but as we move forward, trying to think of amenities that would attract people to our community. Future episodes of Growing Guthrie, we plan to do one on the arts in Guthrie in all forms, places to dine or restaurants and coffee shops, our parks and trail system to show that we have safety and walkability in our community, one on elementary and secondary schools, and one on our vibrant downtown atmosphere with visually appealing buildings, both with history and unique architectural features, our golf courses. Branding is important, and the last several months, we went through a process where the city, the library, the airport, public works, the chamber, et cetera, we've all modified our logos to have similar elements in all of the logos, so that when you see one of our logos, you see similarities in the other, and the ideal there is when you see one, you always go thank Guthrie, no matter which one you see. We want to take that a step further, and we're in the early stages of this, but I know, what I said at home, and we're watching TV, my wife hears a Mercy Hospital commercial, she hears about three notes, and she says, "Well, that's a Mercy commercial." We want to do something similar ours and have a theme song or music to go with our video pieces, so that when people see our video pieces, they hear the first start of it, they know it's Guthrie. And we're working with a young artist in the discussion stages on this to maybe do a piece for that. She was in Christmas in Heartland, her music was featured in there, and she did one video about coming home, and we just want to show that to you to give you some idea, this isn't one we would use, but something like this. And that is what we're trying to work towards that could be used as intro music to some of our video pieces, could be used as background music when we're just showing slides and not talking, and we think that it can help us in the branding. They have, so when they hear that, they think positive about Guthrie. So, just wanted tonight to share with some of the good works that Erin's been doing for us and some directions we're going using GTV20 to promote our community for growth and economic development.
Well, I think those are just outstanding, outstanding pieces that reflect our community, our community Guthrie on the move, and certainly reflecting our community as a destination point as well as home. And it doesn't get much better than that. Doesn't get much better than that. So, great, great work, Erin, again, Bill, all the staff that were involved, and I know many of your staff were involved with ideas that go into this. So, Leroy, thanks to you, and congratulations to the staff. Any other comments? Okay. Continuing on in our public comments, public announcements.
(noise)
That wasn't either one of those.
Now and now.
Usually, when we have a meeting and the phone goes off, we have somebody stand and sing a song, but I think we won't do that now. Anyway, under the title of public announcements, Ms. Meyer, you want to come and say a few words?
Oh, sure.
You're down here to speak.
Well, I'm here with the National Labor.
No, I'm sorry. You have to come here, you have to identify yourself, your address.
Pull the mic down.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know, it's actually an agenda item.
It is an agenda item. I'm sorry.
Yes, so I'll do all that in a minute, now that I know. That was my precursor to.
I apologize. I apologize. Okay. Under public comments, Mr. Evans.
I think you know the drill, name, address, and. I'm Joe Evans, 5921 Morgan Drive here in Guthrie, Oklahoma. I'm not on the agenda. I'd like to add another log to the metal building fire, if I may. I would like to build a metal building in an agricultural area. So, I applied for a building permit, and I did not get it because it's a metal building. So, I went to the city planner and the city manager, and if any of this sounds critical of the city manager, that's an accident. I don't mean anything critical of the manager. I looked at the design standards, and the situation, as I understand it, is that we do have design standards for commercial buildings, and we should, that's great. We have design standards for residential buildings. We have no design standards for agricultural buildings in an agricultural area, and so we have applied commercial building standards to the building I'd like to build, an agricultural Generally, anything that is not prohibited should be allowed. We have no building standards for an agricultural building. So, you know, it's like saying, because it's illegal to dance in the street, you can't drink coffee in your kitchen. We don't have any restrictions or regulations or design standards for an agricultural building. So, absent any regulations, it would seem proper to me that if you can't, if not a law that says you can't do it, then you should be able to do it. So, I don't expect any action from the council. I don't think there's anything you can do. Now, the one thing that bothered me the most was the manager, and again, not being critical of him at all, said there's really no mechanism for me to appeal that, so that's why I'm here. I think there should at least be a mechanism to appeal that. I disagree that the application of the regulations. Could we discuss that? Anybody interested?
Yeah. So, we have a timeline that we're working on. When we take a scenario like this and we convert our one to agriculture, vice versa, or whatever, that are going to put in the stipulations to it, and that's what we're supposed to be working on and present back to this committee. So, maybe you want to come back on your permit in another month. You know, that's all I can say on that deal.
I thank you for pointing out that there might not be specificity as it relates, if I'm understanding you correctly, to the egg area.
Right.
And that may be something that we need to look at in our building ordinance, because clearly, clearly, the intent is not to allow somebody to do anything that they want to do. That's not fair to the neighborhood, to the area, to the city. So, I appreciate you bringing that forward.
And so, I don't disagree that we should have regulations. I agree with that completely. I'm a victim of a metal building in my neighbor's backyard. I'm that guy, too. But my position is, as of this moment, there are no regulations. Absent, and I agree that you should write some regulations.
Yeah, and that's what we're going to do. But you're right, there are none, right? You can go build your metal building.
So, why can I not get a metal building when there's no rule that says I can't?
And I really.
Mate, mate.
This is on the agenda tonight to talk about. The council can take absolutely no action tonight, can take no vote. We're looking at this, trying to figure out what's what. Probably staff would disagree with Brian's last comment, but we're going to work it out. But there's, I mean, the council's heard what you have to say, and we're trying to work through this and come up with an answer that's satisfactory to everyone, but satisfactory to the policy of the city council.
Could I add just a few points of clarification?
Sure.
First, this ordinance has been around for a number of years. It wasn't an ordinance recently drafted by me or the current city planner. And there have been issues with this ordinance for several years as well, and it's one of our priorities to try to look at to address some of our concerns in some of the gray areas in the ordinance. In the meantime, we're stuck with what we have, and staff is working with the city attorney to make sure that we interpret the ordinance as written as closely as we can and as fair as we can. So, I've had probably four emails back and forth with the city attorney to make sure he's given his guidance on the interpretation and stance now. And as indicated earlier, we are working on some modifications, but that will take some time. That might provide some better clarifications, might provide an opportunity for variance. Right now, we just don't have a variance process built into it.
Can I add something or ask a question quickly?
You can.
This comments deal is for you to make comments, not for us. I have a question, though. And that is, where is your property?
1100 West Lake Road. Is the area below the dam?
This is the area we've been talking about that was, had the split A1, R1.
The split zoning we did last time.
Yes. Mr. Evans wasn't here last time. I think you were out of town.
I was out of town.
Okay. But that's where, that's the area that we're talking about. And there was a presentation of a proposed building.
Okay. One last thing. We're debating what the law says. I just don't think it's there. Could I get something in writing from the city attorney?
I think they can be working on some resolution.
If there were, if there were a review process, if I could go to the planning commission, if I could follow, if I go to the board of adjustment, if there was some remedy that I could pursue, I would certainly pursue that. But what we're saying is, or my position is, there's nothing in the law that says I can't, but you are going to write a law against that. Great, go ahead. But today, I just don't see that it's there. Thanks for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number three on our agenda is the consent agenda items A and B. A is the approval of the minutes of the Public Works Authority meeting of March 6th, and B is the approval of amendment number two to the budget, which amends general fund, fire fund, GPWA fund, grant fund, capital project fund, and the airport fund. It's a balancing of these various funds.
Can we talk, pull that and talk about that one real quick? Just real fast.
Okay. You have a question about?
Just in general, what's going on with it? We're pulling everything and transferring it around. I know we do this quite often.
Budget amendment number two. Question? Staff wants to speak to that, please?
I will. We've received several donations, insurance checks. It's unbudgeted revenue, and so we don't have it in the budget, so I'm showing it as a revenue that we've received. We also, we're also showing expenditure line items. For instance, the fire truck is going to spend, it's not fire truck, but it's a power thing. Yeah, it's $34,000 that they're going to expend, if not more. But we received a check from the insurance company, so I need to show that revenue coming in and the expenditure going out.
Say hello to the fire station.
The fire station and the fire form. We didn't budget that this year. We budgeted historically, and we actually received payment on those two items, so I'm showing the revenue that's coming in for both of those items.
You got microphones everywhere now, Cam.
We received a grant from $342,000 for the cardiac monitors, and so I'm showing that revenue coming in and that expenditure going out. So, it's Miss Landy's items like that.
Okay, good enough. Okay. Any other questions on that item? Okay, I will go back and ask for our consent agenda items A and B.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll go first.
Let's see the votes. Congressman, or Congressman, Councilman Bothroyd.
Wait a minute. You hit my button.
No, I did not hit your button.
I voted yes, by the way. I don't know how that read one.
It's a unanimous approval by all those council present to approve the consent agenda items A and B. With that, the city Public Works Authority meeting is adjourned, and I call to order our city council meeting of March 20th. Consent agenda items A, B, and C. A is the minutes of March 6th. B is to approve a denial of a tort claim as recommended by the OMEA group. And C is, again, the confirmation of the various elements of the finance and budget amendment number two that was just previously discussed.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second.
Yeah, so you can do what you want. Jim's got a question.
Discussion?
Yeah, I was going to ask that we at least let people know what the tort claim is we're talking about. I know you know, but they don't know.
It was a lady that stumbled on the sidewalk near our Supersaver grocery store. Is that the right name? Cash Saver Grocery Store. The professional investigations of it identify that there was no liability on the part of the city for that lady's fall. It's unfortunate. She did have some injury, but it was not a liability of the city. Anybody else would like to make comments? Okay. So, that's that. Any other discussion or questions on consent agenda items A, B, and C? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Submit your votes.
I'll go first.
Let's see the votes. And Mr. Bothroyd only voted once on this one, but it's unanimous approval from all those present to approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C. Item number three, possible action to amend the June 30, 2014 agreement to renew between the city of Guthrie, city of Edmond, the regional airport, our board agreement. Staff comments?
In your cover letter, we put an excerpt of the February meeting of the Guthrie-Edmond Airport Board. They had discussion and consideration of board terms and term limits. The chairman reiterated from the previous discussion at the special workshop meeting on January 9th in regards to board terms and term limits. The airport advisory board was in agreement to send to both city council requests to eliminate term limits for airport board members. All board members agreed. The city of Edmond has indicated they would like to amend the airport agreement between the two cities, where the term limits for their appointees would no longer be there. Right now, the term limits by this agreement is three terms, and then you have to set out. So, that's a total of nine years, because each term is three years. If the city of Guthrie and the city of Edmond adopt the amendment that was in your packet, it would, the way it's worded, it would change the wording to say, "The members will serve three-year terms without compensation, with each respective party's governing body determining whether or not their appointees shall have term limits." That would give the city of Edmond the authority to make their own decisions as to the three board members they appoint, whether or not they have term limits. If, once we make this change to the airport agreement, if the council takes no further action, then we would fall back to Resolution 2016-14, and as part of that resolution, it says no individual is eligible to be appointed to more than two consecutive full terms to any single Guthrie board or commission. So, that would be what would be applicable if this agreement is amended, unless you make further changes and instruct staff that you would like to amend that resolution in some way specific to our four appointees to the airport board. I would point out, this is more pressing for Edmond because they have, one of their appointments, third term ends on June 30th of this year, and they have indicated a desire to reappoint that individual. On the Guthrie appointments, our four, three of them's in their first term, one of them's in their second term, but indicated that they, because of other commitments, don't plan to reapply for a third term. So, it'd be quite some time before this issue creates a problem for us. But at some point, if you don't want to go by Resolution 2016-14, you need to instruct staff to draft some change to that resolution to set whatever term limits for the airport if you want it different than all our other boards.
Could we, could we discuss that and do that tonight?
I don't think we can amend the resolution tonight, but as part of this discussion, I think you could give instructions to the staff as to future amendments you would like to bring back to us on that resolution, and then we'd have to draft it and bring it back. And we do have Shalon here and several members of the Guthrie-Edmond Airport Advisory Board, and I think they deserve. I would point out, this is more pressing for Edmund, because they have, one of their appointments, third term ends on June 30th of this year, and they have indicated a desire to reappoint that individual. On the Guthrie appointments, our four, three of them's in their first term, one of them's in their second term, but indicated that they, because of other commitments, don't plan to reapply for a third term. So it'd be quite some time before this issue creates a problem for us. But at some point, if you don't want to go by Resolution 2016-14, you need to instruct staff to draft some change to that resolution to set whatever term limits for the airport if you want it different than all our other boards.
Could we, could we discuss that and do that tonight?
I don't think we can amend the resolution tonight, but as part of this discussion, I think you could give instructions to the staff as to future amendments you would like to bring back to us on that resolution, and then we'd have to draft it and bring it back. And we do have Shalon here and several members of the Guthrie-Eadmond Airport Advisory Board, and I think they desire to make some comments as well.
Let's hear comments. Shalon, do you want to start? And a number of individuals on the board have asked to speak on this issue, or at least identify that they're available to speak.
Yeah, I've got six of my members here tonight with the airport advisory board. Want to look back, just to make sure I have this right. I'm going to have each one of them come up and introduce themselves. Our chairman of the airport advisory board is here tonight and would like to do a little presentation. He's basically been our voice. I like the idea of having the extended terms, if you will. Unlimited, to me, kind of scares me, because I want to know that after a short time, if that person's not doing a good job, that they will be, well, we'll be able to pick a different applicant. So if we have extended or open-ended term limits, that allows that person to have that, the knowledge, because it takes some time. And I'm saying there are certain board, boards that require knowledge, and it takes some time to educate each one of those people. And if they don't have that knowledge, if you will, there are several airport, or not airport, there's several board members that require a certain expertise and knowledge. And I think that a couple of them that I can think of right off, because I'm not real familiar with all the boards and how they work, but the Planning Commission, I know, is really important. If you have people on there for a certain amount of time, they can give you history. When I came to the airport, if it hadn't been for those people being on the airport board and having that longevity or the sustainability, I wouldn't know half of what's going on right now. So I looked to those people that had been on the board for a while. One of the big reasons that, when I knew that our chairman was, his term was getting ready to come up and expire, I was thinking, gosh, he's really been putting in a lot of hours. These are volunteer hours. They're not paid. And to have that at my fingertips has been a godsend for me as an airport manager. I've looked to a lot of the board members for that history, for the longevity and the sustainability of that airport board. So I kind of lean towards that area, but I leave it up to each one of you to decide where you want to go. But again, I look to having those board members to help me do my job, and they have. They've helped me to get to know the airport, ask questions, so I depend on that a lot. So I'd like to go ahead and bring up the other board members, first off. I'd like to bring up our chairman, Dick Guybe, and have him say a few words.
Dick, just identify yourself, your address.
Okay, I'm Dick Guybe. I'm 1608 Hazelhurst in Edmund, and the current chairman for the airport. And I think, in general, we're really not looking for unlimited terms for the board members. What we're looking for, basically, is extended or open-ended terms, meaning that under our process now, the mayors and the council interview and provide names for potential board members. What we're looking to do is improve our board and our effectiveness, and the fact that, I think Shalon touched on the fact, that we have kind of a unique situation in the fact that the guys that are sitting on this board work for two cities. They work for the OAC, they work for the FAA, they work for the regulatory agencies. There's a lot of stuff that goes on outside of, you know, just the two cities. And they have to, they have to learn that. And that's a pretty steep learning curve, I can tell you. And Cheryl's participated in that, so is Brian, and when you sit in there and hear those acronyms flying around, all of a sudden, it's pretty evident that this is a different cat. So what we're anxious to do is provide a framework and a foundation for the board members to come on, get involved in all of this. Now, this is why it's really important to us and to the cities and the councils. Our funding, virtually all the money that goes into an airport's federal money, and it comes down through all kinds of channels and all kinds of administrative ways that you can use it for this and not that, this, that. And all these different programs, you really have to know about in order to fit them into an ALP, which is an Airport Layout Plan, and that's a 20-year plan. We have that plan in place, and we go after that plan every five years and make sure that we're on schedule or change it to make it fit our, what we're trying to do. With the opportunity for board members to come on and spend, literally, because we meet once a month, that's 12 meetings. That's all they get. That's a pretty steep curve for anybody to try and gain that in 12 meetings. So we're thinking that they're really going to be effective and start being available out in the community and helping us work with the state and the Fed within a year or two. But it takes that long, quite honestly, it does, to get that under your belt. So if we can do, and I'm involved with other commissions and boards that have looked at this, and they realize the value of the consistent, long-term board member, the guy that's been there a long time and does know that. We also look at the value of new blood. I mean, that's what, that's what makes boards and projects work. You've got to have new people coming in. So if we can get involved in a system where we've got these, more or less, open-ended and/or terms that are available to folks, that give them the chance to ramp up, and then give them a chance to get involved with these funding agencies, and give them a chance where they can get to the point where they can go out in the community and support Shalon, where that's just not 100% Shalon, that's a tall order. That's what we're after here. And so what we're thinking is, is that if we can amend these terms, so the system that we're under here now, the Guthrie folks have theirs, Edmund's got theirs, and, I mean, that will float, that'll fly. But I hate to see them shortened, if we have to go back to the original agreement. And what I'd like to do is get some kind of a direction, consensus from the council that, yeah, maybe that is a good idea for this particular board and other boards, too. Like I say, I'm involved in other boards that do this. And we've got the old timer, but I guarantee you one thing on the airport board, you're not going to see anybody retire. They'll come in, they'll do whatever they're going to do, and then they'll hit the road. That provides us as a board also, which I think is, I don't want to go on and on, but this is important. We're going to be recruiting new people, and we're looking at people to come onto the board that are citizens, that have some business and some kind of, that's aviation-related. And that's a very real possibility. We're seeing that in the I-35 corridor now, with Boeing has come in now big time. We're getting those kind of guys that are looking to do, because that company requires them to do community service.
You've got a minute left.
Okay, and we're looking at some of, yes, go ahead.
Because we're only got a minute left, all right? For you to talk, so finish talking, and I'll have my question afterward.
All right. The idea is, is that those are the folks that we're going to try and put on this board. They're invaluable kind of folks. They come to, come to us from all kinds, all different parts of the country, and they see these boards as opportunities to come on, get their community service thing out of the way. The neat thing about it is, is they bring a piece of their company. We'll get a little piece of what Boeing does, and we'll get a little piece of what Martin Marietta does, and First Bank's got some bankers that are aviation insurance guys. These guys are available to us, so.
First of all, just to clarify, Edmund can do, can change their term limits, and Guthrie doesn't have to, and vice versa. They do have to go in lockstep. Right now, they're in lockstep.
Yes, yes.
We're all in three years and three terms. That's both Edmund and in Guthrie.
Well, my understanding is we have to approve this for that to happen.
That's what I, that's what I read.
No, that's not correct.
The current agreement, each term is a three-year term, and you can serve three times. So you can serve nine years. In reality, your all terms are three-year terms, because you have to be reappointed after three years.
Each three-year term is reappointment.
You'll have to change the agreement to serve beyond three.
So why are we, why is this on the agenda then?
Because the agreement says, the agreement cannot be changed unless both parties agree that there can be a change.
Yeah, so that goes, okay. The question will be pertinent then. So here's my question.
We don't have to agree with what Edmund does, obviously, but right now, the agreement says that what's in writing has to be, has to be agreed by both parties.
What if we don't agree to it?
Well, then...
Then what happens? That's what my question to y'all is.
Then the agreement, then the agreement goes away, but this, this is such, our partnership has been so great. I mean, this is a wonderful resource. This is a wonderful resource for our community. And the term limits aspect, I think, is being driven a little bit by some people that are terming out. I may be reading into that, but...
Can I, can I ask my question, please?
Yes, you can now.
Thank you. The question, tell me how your open-ended term looks. I already know what it is, but I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page here.
Well, like I said, you're operating under what we call an ALP. It's 20-year plan, you get a guy, comes on tonight. We decide as a group, we're going to go ahead and put new lights in at the airport. If he starts tonight, and we get all that approved through all the channels and all the funding and stuff, he won't still be on the board by the time the lights go in.
Nine years?
A five-year program, as far as, he could be termed out in three years.
No, he's not going to term out in three years, Dick. He doesn't term out in three years. He doesn't term out until three consecutive three-year terms. He could be replaced.
That's, that's, that's a better way of putting it.
Yeah, okay.
Well, so, yeah, and so what I'd like to see is eliminate the terms from this board to the best that we can, just my opinion, okay? And how this would look to me is that every three years, you come back before your respective council and mayor board with the, with an opinion of the rest of the board, whether they want to keep you or not, because I don't know if you're any good, but everybody else might think you're horrible. You know what I mean? And they want you gone, and they'll have to justify why, right where you're at. That's how I see it looking.
That's really how I see that going, too.
Because this board, when we did this, we didn't take into consideration the dual board, dual ownership of this airport, and investment in this airport when we made this wide swath of term limits. I'm a big fan of term limits, probably one of the biggest here. But in this particular instance, this is different. And it's my opinion, we amend the whole thing to reflect open-ended, just how I just described, or if someone has a better way.
Point of clarification, what Edmund has requested is not change the three-year terms.
Yeah.
We don't either.
What they have asked is to do away with the term limits, where after you serve so many terms, you have to set up.
I understand.
That's what the City of Edmund has requested.
And that's what I think we all need to go to.
And if we can go on that same page, we'll be, that will work the best.
Exactly. Because every three years, you're going to come back up in front of your respective board, and if the rest of the board, as a majority, is there saying, hey, Dick, it's got to go, and here's why, then you're just going to go.
That's the way I envision it.
Yeah.
You bet.
And so, I mean, that puts a good stop in it to where you're not having people that are just doing nothing and no contribution and just riding a board for whatever reason.
I'm sorry, Cheryl wants to talk. Yeah, go ahead.
Wouldn't that sort of be resolved if, at the end of each three-year term, each person fill out an application again and reapply, and the board and the councils then reappoint them? I mean, isn't that what we're saying?
That's what we're doing now.
That's what happens now.
And, oh, no, and leave it where they can, they can have more than three terms.
Correct, correct. They can keep going to find that ten-year project.
But that would be an easy, that would be the most diplomatic way.
Exactly.
If they did not, if the board did not want them to be reelected or reappointed for the third or fourth year terms, they would just be not reelected.
Or it could be the second year term, for that matter.
I think, I think, I don't want to use the analogy, I don't want to use the analogy of our legislature, but that's kind of where we are, because they come up for reappointment by the public, okay? And I think that sometimes we get into a mindset where we get a group think, and it's like, well, this is the way we've always done it. I'm a, I'm a fan of term limits. I think it's good to have, as you said, Dick, it's good to have some new blood to come in to the organization and ask the questions. Why are we doing it this way? Or how come, did we think of this? Or, and I'm concerned that if, if we have no term limits at all, that the message out there is that we have a group of seven that are going to be there for, until they decide they're wanting out. That's, that's the concern that I have of the message that we give to our citizens of Guthrie and Logan County, because, as you know, we appoint both Guthrie and Logan County to the board, which is another difference between the thing that we did a year ago, two years ago.
Mayor, quick question. We're having trouble now filling anything. If we start term limiting everybody, we're not going to have anybody.
We had three or four applicants, I think quality applicants, for the last positions that we fill on the, on the airport board.
But I'm saying, all the other things, we're having trouble now filling any positions. I mean, each, each meeting, you always say, hey, we've got this position open. And that's why I want, that's why I'd like to see the term limits just done away with.
Well, no, we need, we need to kind of be...
This board, right here.
Yeah.
Not the other ones.
I understand, and we're talking, what we're talking about now is language that pertains only to the airport board.
Right.
Only to the airport board.
And that's what we need to keep a focus of. And the focus on the board is that, the fact of the matter is, if, historically, let's look at it, okay? We've put a bunch of people on this board just since I've been on council.
Yeah.
Okay? Because they come and they go. So I don't see anybody staking a claim, okay? Like you're presenting, it's going to happen. I don't see that happening whatsoever. So I don't hold credence to that personally.
Well, that, but that lends, that, I think, lends to my point that, that there are plenty of, there are candidates out there, that it is good to get new blood.
And there's going to be new blood. We got Kerry Owens getting off the board. He doesn't want to get back on, so we're going to have new blood in that position. Next year, maybe Trey doesn't want, who knows who's not going to want to get on.
I have a couple of points that I would like to make. One, I'm not disagreeing with Mr. Guybe said about the long-term institutional knowledge with the various programs that they go through, but at the same time, you know, look at the Planning Commission, you've got a 20-year comprehensive plan. They've got to know state statutes, they've got to understand the code of ordinances that deal with zoning laws, they've got to deal with the ordinances for subdivision regulations. So that one's pretty involved, too. And I'm not arguing against the airport, I'm just saying, we may have some other boards that are similar in situation, that having institutional knowledge is important.
Well, but right now...
I said two points. Can I make the other one?
The other point.
The second point that I want to make, if, if, if there's no other better example on, and I'm not a big proponent of term limits, I think when you got good people, work them to death until they get ready to leave. But I think the greatest example you could use in Guthrie, if you look at the turnover at the city manager level, and how that has hampered this community, because there's been a lack of institutional knowledge and continuity, and you've seen that. And I think you can apply that same principle to the airport advisory board, to the Planning Commission, that institutional knowledge is meaningful.
That's a not so great point.
Those are my two points.
And, well, to comment on that real quick, when we first came up with the term limits, because I was on the council workshop... limits, because I was on the council workshop where we did it, uh, it was never really about the term limits on the front end. It was about having these multiple people on multiple boards that when you go to one and you get denied, and you go to another, he's got the same people denying you there. That's what, that's what it was supposed to be about, and somehow it wrapped all in, if we do that, we have to term limits, too. So we changed it all at the same time. It was just too wide of a swath, maybe planning is too wide as well.
It didn't apply to this.
No.
It didn't apply to this.
Mr. Mayor.
No, no, it didn't apply to this.
I would like to make a motion that we do away with the term limits for the Guthrie Regional Air Force, uh, Port Advisory Board, keeping the three-year terms for them to reapply for that position, but for longevity, do away with the term limit and how that would be.
And we have to add to that as well. And you have to add to that motion.
I'll second that.
Well, before you do that, we're, we're talking about amending the agreement, and I know where you want to go, but if, if you want to do that, let's just put the language in the agreement tonight that you want and amend the agreement
That's right.
with that language in there.
Very well, let's amend that agreement then.
If, if you want to do away with term limits.
I'm sorry.
If you want to do away with term limits for airport board only, then the, the agreement that's in your packet, paragraph eight, had changes made in italics and had deleted term limits, I would suggest that language in paragraph eight that's in italics be changed to say, uh, three-year terms without compensation and with no term limits for either city's members.
Works good with that.
But they still need, yeah, exactly, because that gets them reappointed every three years, too.
That gets them reappointed, that gets them reappointed if they want to, and then they can keep going on a twenty-year plan.
So make the motion on that.
But, but, but we can't mandate that to Edmund.
No, but if we let it, then they know.
But, but the language was either city.
Well, Edmund wants no term limits.
I know, I know.
So we're playing, we're gonna be on lockstep with Edmund, and that works out well, so we're all in the same ballpark and the same playing field.
I say we do the motion.
I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but we were thinking that maybe, uh, if we have one of our Guthrie members that would like to answer or speak to this as far as what, is that appropriate to do or just?
If Sarah signed up, they can talk.
Got a list, they're on the list.
Okay.
Okay?
Uh, we'll just keep this short, because, uh, you guys know, this is, I'd like.
This is, it's a five-minute, it's a five-minute.
I'll use less than five minutes. My name is Roger Harms, and I'm, um, representing, uh, the, uh, the Edmund community on this board. I live at seventeen, um, twenty-five Lancaster. I want to make sure that we understand that the old rules and the possibly the proposed rules give the power to the respective mayors to look at what I've done for Mr. Lamb in representing Edmund at each three-year interval. And he can decide there's somebody else more qualified, or I'm not listening to his progressive or non-progressive ideas closely enough, and he can replace me at each three-year level. And both, both possibilities that we're talking about give you that power relating to the Guthrie appointments, completely irrespective of how long any person would last on that board. So we're preserving that power for you with both options. Is that correct?
Power's in the council, they vote on that, yes, as Edmund does.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was pointed out, that that power remains under both options.
Right, yeah.
Three-year, three-year term limits with unlimited amount of terms you want to serve.
Three-year terms.
Just open them.
Yeah, just open them.
Go ahead.
Name, address.
Every three years. My, my name, excuse me, my name is Brad Latham. I live at forty-seven seventy-four East College here in Guthrie. Um, I am the newest airport board member, and I've only been on the board for six, seven months, and I just would like to say that, you know, Dick wouldn't say it, but, because he's, he's the most experienced one here, and if, if Dick timed out, we would be losing a huge amount of knowledge to that board, and we're, we're looking at that on the horizon. And as the youngest member of the board, I feel like that's, that's my opinion on that, and he would be a tremendous asset to lose if, if he timed out, so that's, that's all that.
Thank you, appreciate those comments. Trey?
Good evening, council. Trey Ayers, four-seventeen North Elm Street. Uh, my house needs a paint job, so if anybody needs to come by, please feel free.
Are there, are there term limits on that?
Term limits on that. I appreciate.
Did you not get a letter?
I appreciate the council's, uh, uh, hearing of this tonight. Uh, I, I actually am one of the board members for the city of Guthrie that would be coming up on their third year first term, if you would. So one thing that I may take into consideration as you're looking at this, if you have current board members that are active and who are willing to go to the next term, how that process looks as we bring our application in, because the way the process is set now, I have to reapply for my position. Uh, if I have the support of the board, I would like that obviously to be taken in consideration of my counsel, to be quite honest with you. So as you're reviewing those things, I would ask that you would weight those appropriately as you look forward. Uh, but I also appreciate your consideration, how moving this forward tonight with the no-term limits, because I will echo Brad's position, that Chairman Gibe is a wonderful asset for this airport board, and we are, as he explained, we're looking, much like this city does, not just looking the next six months or next three months in advance, we're looking five years, ten years, twenty years ahead, and a lot of folks would be exiting out before they ever saw the work of, the fruit of their work, if you will, transpire. So thank you for your time tonight, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
And I'll see you at my house.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Paintbrush and roll. Can we just put graffiti on your house?
John, John, go ahead.
Uh, my name is John Valsegir, and I live at thirteen oh-eight Red Canyon Road. Uh, just moved in from the country, so, uh, I'm, I'm legal here. I've been in aviation almost fifty years, and I've been involved from helping to, uh, get airports started, I've been involved in maintenance and modification and sales, I've worked for some of the largest fixed base operators in the country, and among all these people, uh, they have had to be knowledgeable. And as Dick has so eloquently talked about, it takes time to get in that position, and the board that we have right now, and with the leadership of Dick, um, we're on the threshold of, I think personally, Guthrie becoming, uh, a, a real star in the universe as far as airports concerned. We have the ability to do it. Money sometimes is, uh, a problem, but as he mentioned, the government grants, the FAA grants are, are most important into these situations, and there's so much room for improvement and so much, uh, potential in Guthrie. Uh, an airport this size, in this size city, is much like, uh, the access roads to I-35. You have got the ability for corporations to fly their, their business jets in, uh, do their surveys, do their work, and, uh, make the agreements and then leave. We're in that position, we're in a position to be a, uh, an airport that assists and helps the Oklahoma City air, uh, area. Wiley Post Airport is almost to a maximum, and there has to be something go somewhere. Guthrie's the place for it to go, and we have to have the, the resources, we have to have the ability to go out there and, and, and give this sermon to all these corporations and companies across the country that are wanting to move, and gentlemen, they're out there. All we have to have is the ability to do it, and, uh, with grow Guthrie, um, the airport can grow also. And thank you for being able to talk to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I would suggest.
One more?
My name is Stan Young, one-four-zero-five Felkstone Court in Edmond. I'm, uh, the last member on, here on the board. Not to, to, to say a whole lot, but when it comes to people on the board, experience matters. Uh, Guy won't to, I mean, Dick won't toot his own horn, but he's the anchor of, of, of our board. He's been here close to, to nine years. Uh, if we lose him, that, there goes our anchor, but the, the knowledge that he has, and so, uh, I don't think anybody is looking at, at this new proposition to, to, uh, building a kingdom or a fiefdom and to stay forever. It's, it's the experience that, that they have that we need, and that's why we need to change the, uh, the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Stan.
I agree.
Yep.
I would suggest, based on what I'm hearing, one option, instead of approving the amendment that we had originally prepared, because we didn't know where the councils go, go with this, is to change the amendment to read, the members shall serve three-year terms wi- without any term limits and without compensation, something to that effect.
That's, that would be, that would be my motion.
Where you come back, and it's also weighted, it's not just a mayoral council-type, just, I mean, it is a mayor decision at the end of the day, but, or a council-type vote at the end of the day, but the board, if all of a sudden Trey went crazy out there and never came back from painting his house.
I'd like to make the motion.
But just to make sure that that's in there.
I think, uh.
Motion's on the floor.
The, you had, your, your motion, I, I think reflected
Yes.
what Leroy said, but you, would you, would you reiterate it since it was a few minutes ago?
Yes, I make the motion to amend this agreement so that there are.
They serve three-year terms.
They serve three-year terms.
And this is paragraph eight that we're talking about, that's in red in front of all of you.
That each board member will serve three-year terms with unlimited time.
With, with no term.
With no term limits.
With the applicant coming back every three years.
Well, they have to apply every three years, yes.
Well, but it should be weighted towards their board as well with their, you know, because again, we don't know what they're doing. I mean, we, we wouldn't, mayor, you might not even be here, we got some mayor that says, you know what, I don't like you, you're out. Doesn't even put you on the council.
I figured that that was already in here, because Edmund is Edmund and Guthrie is Guthrie. This is just an agreement between both cities, so I think that that's.
I think with just three-year terms, no term.
How does that work?
I don't know.
That's really all we need to get through on missing, it keeps everybody. Yes.
I'll, I'll second that again.
Would you, would you restate the, the motion, please? There's a little bit of, uh, other dialogue going on.
Uh, make the motion to, okay, let the city attorney state it, that's a better way to do it, and I.
Paragraph eight's amended in the red or the italicized language to read, uh, the members will serve three-year terms without term limits and without compensation.
There we go.
I'll second it again.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Again, I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of this. Uh, I, I do think that, uh, I, I, clearly, there's an educational ramp-up, uh, and specific information, uh, specific knowledge base, we have that in our historic, uh, preservation, we have that in planning, uh, we have the opportunity to do nine years without, uh, any kind of ending based on term limits. Uh, I think that is significant. Um, I am concerned that we get into a group think, you've heard me say that before, uh, where we tend to, uh, maybe go on with, um, how we've always done business, and, um, and I, and I, I would like to be able to bring, uh, some, some, um, new perspective in. That is, that's still available, it's available every year when another three-year term comes up. I understand that, I understand that, and I think that's the safety net, uh, that we, that we have. Uh, but, uh, I think we're setting a precedent here that, um, is going, is where, that we're gonna be hearing about from other, uh, boards and commissions. Anybody else want it?
Yeah, I, I would like to say one thing right to that. I want to make sure that, because right now, this is a mayor nomination, okay?
Yes.
And that can't be if a mayor doesn't like the idea. Okay, so it really has to be a board nomination on this moving forward, and we need to change that tonight along with this motion.
Well, I don't think that's appropriate.
Well, you may not, but maybe the board does.
Well, there's, there's actually a motion and a second on the floor right now, and you're under discussion, so unless.
So we could amend it.
You can amend it.
And you can make a motion to amend it.
If the second will do that, but I don't know, and this is just for the purpose of what we're here tonight to do, I think the language that's in the motion now is that.
Does the mayor have to give the applicant to the board? When the, when the applicant comes up, let's say Trey's coming back up, and does, does the board necessarily get that, or is that at the mayor's pleasure?
That's how the process works now, it's the mayor's nomination and the board and the, uh, city council approval or disapproval.
We approve or disapprove.
So you don't necessarily have to put that application up to us, right?
Oh, yes, absolutely do.
Okay.
Clearly, yeah. Oh, no, I can't unilaterally make that appointment.
Okay, well, then that's fine.
No, no.
I'm good with it, I just wanted to make sure that.
Well, I, I knew you were good with it.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion and a second and some dialogue on it, on it.
And a vote.
Um, submit your votes, please.
All votes, Trey.
See the votes. By a vote of five to one, the amendment, uh, carries, and this will be then, I guess, taken to Edmund. Okay, item number four, uh, discussion, possible action, resolution, uh, two-zero-one-eight dash zero-seven, requesting, uh, quality event designation for Little Britches, and I, Ginger, I think you now get a chance, uh, to come up before us.
The Little Britches girl.
Yes, it's the Little Britches. Well, thank you, guys, my name is Ginger Myers, and my address is three-eight-nine-five Arrowhead Road, um, northeast in Piedmont, and, uh, we want to thank you guys for, um, inviting us here tonight and for hosting the Little Britches. We're coming into our third year, and we've got a couple more years here with you, so I'll let Andrea explain a little bit why we're here.
Okay, so this resolution is something we've done, I think, the past couple of years. What it does, the, the state has a Quality Events Act that allows, um, events that meet certain criteria and develop, um, attractions and resources into the state to apply for state tax reimbursements at a certain cap, and, um, allows the host city to act as a pass-through for those dollars. So, um, this is not something, this resolution is not something where the council's being asked to spend money, but we do ask, um, we are acting, if approved, as a pass-through to reimburse a certain number of tax dollars to National Little Britches Rodeo Association, who is producing the event, and I think doing some, some improvements and a lot of investment in that to make it happen.
Yeah, yeah, we had, we had quite a cap, uh, quite a significant capital improvements at the La-Z-E, um, and it brought, kind of, a, an option for larger events to the city of Guthrie.
Didn't we actually do this last year, too?
We did, it's an annual thing.
Couple of years.
In two thousand seventeen, La-Z-E received a hundred and eight thousand dollars out of this program.
Wow.
And in two thousand eighteen, they received twenty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-one dollars through this program.
I see, we make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion and a second. Uh, any other discussion, uh, or questions of the two presenters here? Um, I, I'd just like to make a comment, I think Little Britches does an outstanding job, uh, for our community, for our county, uh, in the, in the, in the region. Uh, I, I don't know how many kids you bring in, but it's, it's a ton, you know the numbers.
Yeah, we had twelve hundred last year, eleven hundred and eighty, and we're thinking we're gonna have probably thirteen hundred-ish this year with about six thousand spectators.
Yeah, and, you know, the, and the parents and the grandparents and, and so forth that come and follow, uh, those kids, i- it's, it's wonderful. I think your organization, uh, is doing a really, really fine job, you've got some good metrics going, uh, and I, I would hope that would, that would continue, uh, but, uh, I think you're a, a, a great partner for our community.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, uh, submit your votes, folks. See the votes. Unanimous approval to move forward with that resolution, uh, for the Quality Events Designation. Number five, discussion, possible action to authorize a series of contracts totaling almost, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars, uh, set forth in bid number two-zero-one-eight dash zero-two. almost $700,000, set forth in bid number 2018-dash-02. Staff, comments?
The series of contracts that we're proposing, if you look at your cover letter for this agenda item, section A, the 12-foot wide asphalt trails to Tom Hudson paving, $102,259.60, and alternate number one, pave the parking area, again, to Tom Hudson paving, Guthrie, Oklahoma, $56,406.11. And section B, the playground equipment and surfacing to ACS Playground Adventures out of Oklahoma City for $279,000. Section C, the splash pad and equipment to RJR Enterprises Rogers, Arkansas, $89,000. Section D, pre-manufactured restroom building to C4L out of Edmund, Oklahoma, for $137,209. And section E, side electrical system to Young Contracting, Okla, out of Oklahoma City, $19,000. For a total of $682,874.71, we do have the funding for this contract. I would point out, as part of this discussion, if you look at the cost of this splash pad and equipment, it's about $89,000. Our original discussion, this probably won't be the only splash pad that we have in our community, we'll probably try to scatter some throughout the community in various regional parks or neighborhood parks, so I'd like to get to fill from the city council, they encourage us to explore some additional splash pads in the, in the near future, but back to the task at hand, we want to award these contracts, is what we're proposing. I would note that a portion of this project is being done in-house by Public Works Department, which is saving us some dollars. Public Works Department's doing the dirt work, construction of the pavilions, curbs and gutters and other miscellaneous items. On the timing, if we award these contracts tonight, and we have a pre-construction conference and then issue a notice to proceed by April 21, the trails would be done by May 21, electrical by June 1, the park paving by June 5, and the playground and the splash pad by July 5, and then the pre-manufactured restroom buildings, November 17. Acceptable, if it's acceptable to the general public, by utilizing porta-potties, the city could open select components of Banner Park, i.e. the picnic shelter, splash pad, playground area by the middle of July 2018. I think Aaron's going to put up some slides, this is the layout of the park, in the middle is the playground equipment, and you can see the playground equipment there, it's handicapped accessible, it's separated somewhat by age category, the surfacing will be a more of a rubberized surface rather than chips, that is a prototype of some of the playground equipment that will be in the playground area, and then if we could go to the splash pad, that's kind of the prototype of the splash pad and the equipment, not all of this equipment will be on there, but this is the type of equipment you will see on there, and the way we're constructing this, on some of the spray areas we have, we'll have it set up so if we feel we need more of these play features in the future, we can add some as needed. I would point out that on the next slide, where on the prototype you saw a rock formation, the way we bidded this, you could provide alternates, the equivalent, and we had two providers you could go to, and this, they're calling it a spraying flare or dumping water flares, that will be in place of the rock formation that you saw, and then the last side is, of course, that's the type of picnic shelters or pavilions that we're building in the park for families to have picnics while they watch their kids play at the playground or use the splash pad.
What about the restrooms, do we have a picture of that?
Do not, I thought you knew what was that looking like. Well, since pre-manufactured, that can be a porta-potty.
Exactly.
I couldn't help myself, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Well, I think, awesome, awesome plan, this is one of the elements of the CIP sales tax money.
Correct.
And I, I just think this is, this is something that is, is a wonderful asset for our community, and specifically about the splash pads, I, I, that's a, that's a better economic value than, than what I was anticipating, that price, I think that's a, that's something that we should definitely continue to expand and look at installing in, in other parks as, as resources become available. But I think this is, this is below our, our original cost estimate that I think we talked about a number of months ago, which I think was closer to a million dollars, obviously our, our staff is doing some of the work, has contributed towards that, but I think a job well done by everybody, everybody concerned. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make that motion that we accept these contracts.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Submit your votes, please.
I'll vote for it.
Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval by all those present to move forward with the authorizing of the contracts for bid number 2018-dash-02, construction of Banner Park. Item number six, discussion, possible action on Myers Engineering Task Force, Task Order, I'm sorry, number 132 for preliminary documents to reconstruct and rehab Oklahoma Avenue from Division to Ash. Staff?
In October of 2017, the council approved three resolutions to apply to the ACOG STBG program for Sooner Road, Southwest 19th Street, and Oklahoma Avenue from Division Street to Ash Street. The competitive scores we received, the, the lowest score for a project was funded was 36.264. Oklahoma Avenue received 28.73 points, Sooner Road 19.359, and Southwest 19 17.772. What I'd like to point out is, if you remember back to the CDBG grant that we applied for, to just be eligible to apply for that, we had to have the construction drawings ready to go out to bid and had to have the permit from DEQ before we could even apply. It's not that stringent, but what they do in the point system at ACOG is you get points for readiness, so if we had our construction drawings ready to go and we were ready to go out for bids, we could receive up to 18 points for that, because what they do is they give you a readiness score between one to six, and then multiply it by three because it's weighted. And if you look at the scoring, for example, our Oklahoma Avenue received one readiness point, which means we got three points in the scoring system. The Normans, the Edmonds, Midwest City, towns with more financial resources, this is geared towards them because they get their projects, construction ready and have the plans and have a pipeline of projects, so when they submit, they get readiness points. So, for example, the project that scored the highest, they got five readiness points or 15 points.
And they probably just went to a file cabinet and pulled it out because they had it ready.
Correct. So if we got a five instead of a one, that's 12 more points, that would have put us at 40 points, we'd have been the second highest scorer.
Right.
What we're proposing from staff standpoint is that we take our highest rated project, the Oklahoma Avenue project, go ahead and have Myers Engineering do the construction drawings so that it's shovel-ready or ready to go out for bids, so that we can be more competitive this fall when we reapply, and we typically have set aside $100,000 out of the user fees, utility user fees for paving and $200,000 out of our CIP tax for an annual paving program of $300,000. What we would propose this year is that we use $225,000 of that to make us more competitive and then do a smaller overlay project of $100,000 this year in lieu of doing the full $300,000.
You lost me. I fell right off the chair, I'm lost on the last part.
Okay, we normally, we normally use $300,000 for an annual street overlay.
Right.
What we're proposing is use $225,000 to get this project bid-ready.
Right.
And then only do $100,000 overlay this year.
So, so part of the money is coming out, is, is being changed.
But we have to fix this road anyway.
Well, this is just, this is just a good investment in our, in our future, if we're going to compete for, for this money at, at any level, ACOG, state level, federal level, we just need to be able to, to, to play this game, and it's not a game, it's serious, but we just need to be able, to be ready to go, and clearly, I mean, if we'd gotten full points, we would have been, probably would have been funded for, for, for our, our project this year.
There's no guarantees.
No guarantees.
Harrison Avenue Bridge that didn't get any, what did it get?
This Harrison Avenue Bridge is in that, and I think Aaron has the project area.
I didn't see it in there.
Okay, it should have been in your packet.
It is.
But this is the drainage work.
I guess it as, and bridge rehabilitation, I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
What this include is the downtown stormwater or drainage improvements, the bridge demolition and improvements in Harrison Street, and the street improvements along those streets that you see in red.
Right.
It does not include, this, this project is a $3.2 million project construction cost, they will pay 80% of that, or 2.6 million if we get a grant, we would have to match it with 20%, 652,000. So it doesn't include the engineering, it doesn't include any drainage improvements south of the Harrison Street Bridge from the wall of the stadium south, and, and it does not, because we'll, we'll look at doing that in a later phase, and it does not include the downtown event center, and Aaron, if you would show that slide, doesn't include the above-ground improvements or purchases of any property for that outdoor event center, but we've talked to ACOG and they've encouraged us to apply for an EDA grant for the above-ground portions of that event center project, but they don't want us to get too far ahead if we don't have the money to do the subsurface work and the street work, to apply for a grant to do the improvements on top, so I wanted to make sure that we felt we were competitive on this grant before we start working on the EDA grant.
I'm going to make a motion, approve Task Order 132.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion or questions of staff? Submit your votes.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of all those present to move forward with Myers Engineering Task Order 132 for those, those document, development of that, of that plan and those documents. It's a, just a really good investment in our future. Item number seven, discussion, possible action to award bid number 2018-dash-01, City Hall Second Floor Interior Renovations. Staff comments?
I think Aaron has three slides to put up for this one, maybe wing over it, but we've talked about, in this wing over here, that we would redo the entry to it and it would be a shared space for the Chamber of Commerce, our Tourism Director, Director of Economic Development, and we would have a shared conference room where we have our executive sessions. Well, to staff, it didn't make sense for us to take a building that's very attractive and only do one side and then lose the symmetry, because we didn't do anything on the city cir, city clerk utility side, so we looked at doing some improvements where those still batch and are attractive, and we also, when we visited with Kim and her staff, we looked at doing some modifications to make it more ergonomic, is that the correct terminology? In a, a more friendly workspace for them and make it ADA compliant, which we're not right now, to do all those improvements, our low bid was, was CNJ Contractor and Consulting, $56,620.
Approximately, what timeframe, what are we talking about here?
Is it three months, Tenny? I don't remember the construction phase, it's a short construction window.
I was thinking like 30 days.
Yeah.
30 days to accomplish it, okay.
To do both sides?
Because there's going, obviously going to be some inconvenience while we're doing that, so 30 days would be pretty good. Tenny, you want to make a comment here?
I believe it's going to be 30 days in construction, I believe we're to start, if, if everything's approved tonight, first part of next week on the demo part of it, and the contractor will fall in right behind us, and it'll be about a 30-day project.
How much do you think we're saving by doing our own demo on the deal?
I don't, I, I'm not sure.
Probably, okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions of Tenny or, or other staff? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to move forward with bid number 2018-dash-1.
So move.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote for it.
Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval to move forward, move forward with bid number 2018-dash-01. City Manager Report number eight.
I apologize, I don't have a City Manager Report, but sometimes I think the train needs to slow down a little bit for me to do reports, I can either keep doing work or I can do reports.
Keep working, you're doing great.
Working, I think, that was a unanimous approval on that one. Item number nine is a comment from City Council, Councilman Bothroyd.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Case.
Likewise.
Councilman Wood.
Nothing, other than I think we did the right thing by the Airport Board today, letting that go, I think that's an important thing to keep that going and be in step with the City of Edmund, and that our, keep this, the minds and things are, we need to have them on the board.
Councilman Taylor.
I just wanted to say, I know I talked to the mayor this morning, we should say congrats to Mrs. Oklahoma, she is here, so I, not tonight, but I mean, in this town, so that's really outstanding to know that, and I know, don't forget, 89ers is coming up, and the mayor's probably able to say a little bit more about that, but I'm excited about that, that's not that far off either, it'll get here quicker than you think.
Councilwoman Page.
Well, I'm going to say thanks to the staff tonight, and especially what they're doing over at Banner Park, I've driven by there several times just to see how that was going, and you guys are doing great, it seems to be moving pretty fast.
Tenny's group's awesome.
Yeah.
I'll second, I'll second that. Oh, hey, Mayor, one quick thing.
I was going to say that, I don't want to give you big heads.
How about those cowboys?
How about those cowboys?
We knew that was coming in.
Sooner it will be back next year.
That's right, next, next year.
Okay, just my typical comments about we've got some vacancies on, on various boards, the Convention and Visitors Board has now two vacancies, we just received a resignation last night, so there's two vacancies on that, Forestry continues to have one, I believe Library has some vacancies also, and Planning has two vacancies. Please go to the City of Guthrie website, it identifies specifically, the, the form is available there, it identifies how often those particular boards or commissions meet, please be a part of, of what is absolutely wonderful vibe in our community, as we saw from the videos about things that are going on here, and be a part of that.
Thank you.
Pastor, you, you and your ministry are invaluable to our community, so thank you, Don. Just one last word on 89ers, it's a month away, are you, are you going someplace?
Surely. I hope.
89ers is, is a month away, April 21st is the parade, Jeff, Councilman Taylor and I are co-chairing the VIPs, we'll have a number of VIPs in the parade, if you have a convertible that you would be willing to be a part of the parade, we're looking for convertibles to transport our VIPs in the parade that day, approximately noon to 1:30, it will we're looking for convertibles to transport our VIPs in the parade that day, approximately noon to one thirty, it will, it will take. It's a wonderful activity, and you might even find Miss Oklahoma in your vehicle, or Mrs. Oklahoma, who is also Mrs. Guthrie in, in your, in your, or you could find Will Rogers and Wiley Post in, in your car, and so they will also be here. Eighty Niners, a big event for our community, buy your buttons. Get ready to buy your Chuck Wagon tickets for that, that Tuesday. With that, ladies and gentlemen.